My phone says 7:31.
Okay, good evening. Call the 379th Regular Planning Commission meeting, call place four. Mr. Rick, will you do the roll call please?
Dennis Olson.
I'm speaking.
Scott Duncan.
Here.
Randall Brenner Smurl.
Here.
Monty Poynman.
Here.
Eileen Davis.
Here.
Brian Roth. Ken Lauterbach.
Here.
I believe we have a quote.
Quorum, alright. So consent agenda, three items. Approve the agenda for, not March 20th, for today, April 17th. Approve the minutes from our January 16 meeting and approve the minutes from the March 20 meeting. Is there any comments on any of those items? Seeing none, do I have a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Olson. Second by Commissioner Lauterbach. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Seven zero. Mr. Roth is joining us.
Great.
Okay, so our active agenda is the public hearing for design standards.
Correct, so we'll give you a little bit of background on the, how we got here. And we also have our consultant here tonight, so he will go over the plan in greater detail and answer any questions you may have. And then, at that point, when you're ready, we would open it up for the public testimony portion. When we get to that part, remind anybody that's speaking for our events to state their name and place of residence. So, how did we get here? Well, it goes back to 2003, believe it or not, when the Conference of Plan was adopted. And it included some goals and policies pertaining to College Avenue. So those were adopted and further reinforced in 2008, when they were kept in the Conference of Plan, when an update was done. So what we're doing right now is basically implementing one of the goals and policies in the Conference of Plan. And that's, that's the point of having a Conference of Plan, is to outline the intentions of the city and, and to accomplish those by adopting regulations that, that support those goals and policies. When we started the actual design regulation, design standard process in January of 2017, we had an initial meeting with the consultant. Council authorized the staff to start working with a consultant. So we consulted with Bob Krikak, who represents a, it is the Rural Community Design Initiative, and they work with small communities developing design standards. That would otherwise be on a table for a community of our size, because it's a rather expensive process to go through. He's with, he's a professor at WSU in architecture, and we had involved a number of graduate students in the project as well. So we had our initial meeting in January to kind of establish what we were going for. We took, you know, went through the Downtown Mixed Use zoning code. That was adopted in 2010. The Downtown Mixed Use Zone, when that was established, that's what gave us our street standards, so our lights. It also required that any new businesses be built, basically curb tight, you know, behind the sidewalk. So the new building that was built up on College Avenue and A Street, that's why you see the building up front and the parking in the back, creates that atmosphere of a small town where, you know, you have that sense of feeling, a sense of place. It also, it outlined a greater list of the allowed uses within the zone. So that was something new. In our general commercial list of uses, it's pretty, there's not a lot of detail to what's allowed in there. So we kind of honed in on smaller businesses, that's what we would like to see along here. College Avenue wouldn't be an appropriate location for like a car lot, those sort of businesses, you would want a general commercial zone for that type of use. So we met with the consultant, and then we had our first community workshop in March. We held those on Sundays rather than Saturdays, just to respect the community's tradition of holding Sabbath on Saturdays. We had okay turnouts. We did two of those, the second one we held in April of 2017. And in between those two workshops, we met with the Walla Walla University Master Planning Committee. We brought, Bob came down and we did a presentation to that committee, because they do own a number of properties outside of the university district. The intent of these regulations would not impact the university section of College Avenue, but any properties they own outside of the university section that are zoned, downtown mixed use would be subject for any new buildings that would go up.
Could you clarify the university section, for us?
Essentially, along College Avenue, the university district section is from Fourth and College to Whitman and College. So it's, I think roughly 600 feet, something like that. Actually, I think maybe it's more than that, anyhow. There was also, once, once we got to the point where we're at right now, in January, when we, when we posted these up on our website, Mike Zatella, who works with our Economic Development Tourism and Event Commission, also brought this to that commission and in March of 2018. And that commission recommended that the planning commission and city council approve these design standards and put them in code. So to kind of, to focus in a little bit more on what the, what the Conference of Plan says, I'll just read off of what's in your packet, so the public can hear. So the Conference of Plan policy UD-1A states that the city develops specific programs and regulations for dealing with the visual quality of the city, at a minimum to include a design review process, landscaping standards, and a sign code. So if you remember, we're also, we've been in the process of working on the sign code as well. This, these design standards, they kind of touch on that a little bit, but they don't implement any of the, the sign code will be its own standalone section, so. So, and then policy UD-1B calls for the development of design standards for future development along College Avenue that will contribute to the overall visual quality of the street. And so basically, implementation of these design standards and guidelines will further fulfill the policy of UD-1B. This is a public process we've been going through, so we had several workshops. And we also required all, notified all of the impacted properties, there's 85 of them that we notified. And so we are, we are required to notify according to our code, so there's a 15-day notice period. We noticed on April 3rd. And so that meets the requirement. We also published in the Union Bulletin, and we've had, we have a notice up on our city website, and we've used like Nextdoor and Facebook to get the notice out on the hearing portion. I don't think there's anything else in terms of process that I'm leaving out. So with that, we have Bob Krikak with RCDI and Cassandra Crawl, who's a graduate student who worked on the project here tonight, to go ahead and present kind of the details of this plan. Unless there's any questions before they come up that you want to ask me about process that we went through.
This plan is designed for future development, is that correct?
It is.
Without trying to change anything in voice at this point.
No. In terms of existing structures, it would be treated more as a, like if you're doing a facelift or something like, hey, here's our, here are our standards. But, so one of the examples that's in there is, is a cottage, and it, we repurposed it in the example as a restaurant. So they still keep the Craftsman Cottage look to it, but they're just repurposing the use. We have a number of businesses along College Avenue that per se would be grandfathered in, I mean, we've got a car wash, I mean, how are you going to make a car wash curb tight, you know, things like that. Andy's is another example of an existing business. Now, there might be things that, that they could do to their facade that might, you know, pull in more of the theme that we're talking about. There's a Rozars in Spokane in a Browns Edition neighborhood that was renovated when I was in college. And it's an older, it's one of the oldest neighborhoods in Spokane, near, right near downtown. And they, they did new brick facades and old school lighting on it and more glass on the front, and made it look like, you know, your typical storefront that you would see on, on, in an old downtown, but it had a parking lot in front of it, you know, it was, it was a shop, you know, it was a, it was a supermarket. But there are things that you can do, but they're not a requirement. We're not going to, if, if this is adopted by council, we're not going to go out there and start handing out flyers and notices telling people that they have six months to bring their storefront up to meet our design standards, that's not the intent.
Some of the still rentals are residential, drop use.
Right, and, and the downtown mixed use zone, when that was adopted, that was a concern that, say, a house was destroyed by a fire or some other disaster, that they wouldn't be able to rebuild. And so the way we wrote the downtown mixed use code is that those, if you have a single family home and it's destroyed by fire, you can rebuild that single family home, we're not going to make you, we don't have design standards in here for residential, it's for commercial. And even some of the multifamily, there's, there's some duplexes, you know, the Hallmark Apartments would fall into that category of, they could rebuild and wouldn't have to meet these standards. You know, there's a number of, like Bob's Styling Salon, that building right there is, is a good example of, there are a few things, if somebody was doing a renovation on it, that they could, tweaks to it that they could make, that, you know, it already has the glass up front and the cute little two entrances to each side of the business. And, you know, it has the, what do you call it, where the, is it the plinth with the?
Yes.
Wow, okay. The plinth, you know, you know, some paint and, you know, maybe new siding or something. And there's recommendations for that in the standards, but it, it meets, you know, very easily, you would very easily be able to comply if you were doing a renovation. There, there's a number of examples along College Avenue, I mean, the lawnmower place, you know, it's got all that glass up front, you can do things to that to dress it up, to, you can do modern style architecture and you incorporate, and I think this plan provides good examples of more modern styles of architecture, but you still incorporate certain elements of it, and it gives, gives you that feel that, that the plan is calling for.
Any other comments, Jim?
Do you have the ability to go through that with a slide show?
We, can we download it as a, as a, no, I don't think we do. But we can, we can do, do you have a PowerPoint or a PDF? I mean, we can scroll through it for you, but I don't know, no. Let's go ahead and, if you want to. I think, yeah, if you use the up and, up and down arrow, that might work. There, that'll work for you?
Yeah, this'll work, just keep my finger on the, away from the roller ball there.
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to talk about our work here tonight. I know I've been here a few times in the past, at work with Mr. Olson and Ms. Davis on some of the workshops, and worked extensively with John in making these understandable to a wide range of users, not too restrictive. And again, as these state that they're intended as a menu to work from to create a sense of place in, along College Avenue. These are the guidelines that were asked for in the comprehensive plan, and they also reference to zoning ordinance, which talks about the building setbacks, et cetera, so they're here to complement those other aspects of your planning documents. We've actually taken this and, we have posters back here that we, we've started to do academic level presentations of our work here with College Place, and so that poster back there kind of condenses the whole process, shows some of the drawings we used in the lower left there, there's a lot of red ink on it, and it shows that we kept revising and revising these to get them right, to make them as clear and as understandable as possible, and also as, not so restrictive or too prescriptive, but to allow for planning staff to work with developers to achieve the intent of these without, you know, too hard edged about it. So, you know, we do show here in the upper right corner, you know, how you could take an existing building that's a residential use and convert it in a transitory phase into a commercial use, and eventually, you know, these are intended to be, you know, maybe my grandchildren will see this executed in a sense of, you know, a Main Street feel to College Avenue, and it's intended to take about 20 years in order to be fully implemented, but it's, it's that process that gets started here. They, so these are intended to help inform a dialogue with the planning staff.
We can do it for you too, easily, with just the arrow button probably, I think.
There you go. Okay, so we worked off of, you know, someone and I came out here in January of 2017, and we met with John and Mike and Mayor, and Mike put us through the town, and we got these existing documents that we started our work with. We broke it up into building design, streetscape design, streetscape elements, and zones of College Avenue. It's in parts that are understandable about each aspect of the building. A large part of this focuses on the pedestrian environment and the attributes of that, and getting a character down at the level where people are, and that's where most of the materials would go, where you'd pay attention to lighting, signage, getting a high level of transparency in the storefronts, where they're therefore offices or mercantile into, from the street into the shops and the offices, so that there's that feeling that whatever's going on in the buildings is a part of the street and vice versa, and a downtown feel to it. As John mentioned, putting the buildings up within, I think they asked that they be five feet back from the back of curb setback, five to 10 feet, so it helps create a street wall, which defines the place, helps create a sense of place as a, an old Main Street feel, which was one of the asks in the comprehensive plan. You wanted a slower pace of life, a Main Street feel, they wanted those characteristics in this, and so pulling the buildings in has a way to calm traffic. And the narrower the street feels, the tendency to slow traffic down and create that feel that people want. Also helps you feel like it's easy to, you know, by not seeing what I want on this side of the street, it's not that far to go shop on the other side of the street, the idea called cross shopping. And so here, we've looked at a lot of case studies, a lot of different examples, and tried to pull those elements into the, this plan. We realized that many of these relate back to historic type buildings, or neoclassic revival buildings from your turn of the century downtowns, but we've also brought in elements in our examples of how modern buildings, you know, maintain these, these elements. So we did a number of drawings, hand drawings, that show how these might be utilized in a new, in new construction. And so pushing the buildings up to the street, you see the high level of attention to attributes, to amenities on the pedestrian level, and then viewers, and move up into the second and third stories. And we tried to clearly delineate how these are applied, so that people who aren't maybe really well versed in building design will get the idea of what it is that these concepts are and how they're applied in buildings. So here's, the other was more of a building design view, this is more of a pedestrian level of the street, talks about streets, accessories such as benches, waste containers, bike racks, store signage, amount of glass, it shows there, so you get that in and out feel at the sidewalk level, the shops and the sidewalk, and awning, what's an awning? What are its materials to help create the character on the street? What's a canopy, what are its materials? How close can they come to the right of way before there are imperatives to move things through the lot right of way? And so, you know, the idea of the character that these are out to guide developers to achieve. We talked about building design, this goes into detail about the amount of glass and the clarity of the glass, and trying to keep people from putting up glass storefronts and then covering them with mini blinds, or putting up a reflective glass, and so again, you're trying to not defeat the ability for what's in the ground floor uses to be a part of the street state. Next. And we talked about materials, how people could creatively apply those materials, what might be some brick patterns you could use, the types of, how you create, you break up the facade, use of a kick plate at the windows, a plinth below, you know, the base of the building, and kind of referencing back to neoclassic design elements, but in a modern way. So there was the, in a building, you try to have a base middle and top, and that helps break up the massing, and part of the base is the plinth that John was talking about, which is historically where the square that a column sat on, so helps break up the mass of it, so it has more of a human scale. So more examples, drawn examples, so that people can see how these might be implemented. And we did talk about building heights. So we've got examples from, in the top left there, what a, we said a minimum, I think, of a 25-foot building height, and that 20, 25 feet, maximum of 45, 50 feet. And so we took examples of existing buildings, this one comes out of downtown Pullman, showed where the bottom of the canopies would be at 10 feet, and so you get a sense of scale for that, where the 20-foot high building would be, which would be the bike shop there in the middle, and then where 45 feet would be, which is the building, the lineup above the building on the right there. So it's not massive, and it's, but it does provide a variety of parapet heights and some variety to the streetscape, but at the same time with the storefronts being up within five feet of the back of the sidewalk, it helps create that street wall. More discussion about the pedestrian access. So you have some lots here that are through lots to the back, and so if you're going to develop that access to the streets on either side of College Avenue, some ways to creatively treat that. How to treat blank walls, so this will evolve over time. And so the first few buildings may have blank walls down on their property line, and how to treat those in a way that doesn't put too much burden on the property owner, but then doesn't leave the city with an ugly wall there for three years until the next building comes along. So it's maybe encouraging. Murals, as many cities have done, or rather than have that, end up getting covered up in five to 10 years, just a nice paint job and a way of treating the wall, so it's not just bare materials like bare ceiling. Getting down to materials and colors, so we talked about the different materials that could be used on the storefront, higher quality at pedestrian level, and then you could probably go to a more economical of above. So down at pedestrian level, more real materials, of brick, stone, concrete, glass, wood, and then as you get above that, transitioning to some of these synthetic plaster and metals that are a little less expensive, and still have a good look, but have a durability for the building. We talked about a color palette that tries to pull from natural elements in the region. And talked about exposed roofing materials, so you don't end up with asphalt shingles facing the street, but maybe something a little more enhanced, like a metal standing seam metal roof or tiles and how, you know, the patterns could be used there. Streetscape, trying to encourage the Arts Council to get engaged with putting, like Lewiston has done, bringing public art to the streetscape to enhance that experience. And then, just, you know, as the street, you've already done your streetscape development for the most part, with the new paving, curving gutter, and trees, and lighting that are in place, and so just maintaining that. And then, we, as we looked at the overall length of College Avenue, it seemed like it would divide up nicely into different zones, you know, there are four zones indicated on the map there, and each one's about a quarter mile in length, and so each of those different zones could start to take on a different character through the street accessories, so that rather than everything the same for the mile length, that it could vary from district to district. Talking about some trees and plantings are already well established, getting public garden there. Next. And street furnishings, and so some examples of bus stops that have been done in a creative way, not just a package manufactured, but these, on the lower left there, you got students from WSU from fine arts and architecture and interior design to come together and brainstorm about some creative solutions for bus stops, and we're planning on building out one of these. You see bike racks there in the upper left, creative use for benches, and so just giving some life to the street through those accessories. These are the districts that we talked about. So we have the North College Avenue District, still heavily, a lot residential there, you've got the university district, and we've highlighted the major intersections in yellow. And then the blue ones in the university district are where the, you've got the pedestrian access to each side of the campus there. Coming down here to the, what we call the downtown district, where we're in right now, and then the South College Avenue District. And so, you know, each of these may take on their own character, and they develop differently, but they, you know, which could be encouraged, which would help break up the, you know, the length of the mile long street there. John asked, and I think this worked out really well, because it gave us, John asked for definitions to be put into the package, and so that it was clear what exactly these and so that it was clear what exactly these things were that we were talking about. But people who do this day in and day out may take for granted what the definition of something is. But you know, if you've got people who are developing for the first time, this will help them understand things more clearly along with the illustrations that we provided. I think that is the end of the package there. And then here's our credits, all the credits. And so this was just a group photo at the end of our first workshop. And talks about the, who all has been a part of this. And that's a synopsis. I think I've covered the new things. Quickly, I think John has provided copies of the documents to anyone interested. Questions?
Yeah, so I need just to hear from the public. What we typically do is have the commission address any questions and then we'll open up to public comments. So we will come back to the commission after public comments. So you will have an opportunity to pick questions through the discussion. Let me make comments upfront before we open to public comments. All right. Well, it is 8:01. Let's open to public comment and thank you, those members who have joined us today. If you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone and we do ask that you state your name and address. You do not have to be a City College Place resident to speak, but we do ask for your name and location information. Thank you.
My name is Jeanelle Hartman. I'm an attorney. I'm on Sixth East Dollar Street. I'm here on behalf of Tim and Sandy Giles. They have the Lemon Tree on College Avenue. And I think they've had a lot of challenges as business owners and many of the business owners have talked that as part of the development changes that have happened in College Place. And so they just want to make clear that these aspirational guidelines, I think, I think the presentation has made clear that these are not intended at all to be hardline rules that dictate development requirements. Instead, this is kind of more of an aspirational vision that can be a collaborative process. But they would urge the commission to make clear that in practice and in application, that the business owners aren't adversely impacted because the real life, street level impact of much of the changes in the development, particularly on the Giles and some of the businesses on this side, I think this commission is well aware of a lot of the problems they face that have turned into very real dollar and cents problems. And so we're dealing with the city on those issues and a lot of the details are for another day. But they just wanted to make sure that their voice was heard, that, as these guidelines are implemented, if this commission decides to adopt the recommendations, that business owners are allowed to maintain their businesses in the same way, you know, the Lemon Tree's been here for 50 years and really would like to continue to stay. It's had a real rough, rough patch here through the transition. So they wanted to make that clear tonight. Thanks.
Thank you.
Do you make comments or ask questions left then or wait until it's all up?
Wait until it's finished.
Okay.
That's, I would recommend, yeah, wait until.
Anybody else? Once we close, public comment, that is the end. All right. We'll bring you back to commission.
You need to close the public.
Okay, yes, it is 8:05. Public comment is closed, mainly. Bring you back to commission now. Comments, thoughts, please.
I think my first question, comment is, without going into great detail, the Lemon Tree, you called it, is that, is the amount of expense going into it because of trying to change the facade of a building? Or the purpose of the structure?
I think it's multifaceted. The challenges.
Come up and say that we can have a summary.
Sure. And, you know, certainly these folks can speak directly. It's been the compilation of issues. And so certainly the problem started with parking because they're on, on-street parking is completely taken away. So that really does go against the commentary that we've heard here today, that part of the plan was to encourage customers and clients to be able to park. And so we have elderly folks, really vulnerable folks that are in wheelchairs that can't get into that business safely. And it's a huge safety problem. Because there's, there's a population of ladies that get their hair done every week. Well, if they're in a wheelchair trying to get through a gravel back drive, not driveway, parking lot in a wheelchair, that's just not safe and it's not appropriate. And so we've, we've had some real challenges with the city to understand why, and I think this is marked even, even on the drawing here, that this is a major intersection. And in real life, boots on the ground moment, that's not a major intersection. It may be as part of the comprehensive plan, but, so that has been a tremendous challenge that the Lemon Tree's dealing with. I think they're looking at upwards of $20,000 to pave that back lot. So, and then as part of that curbing problem, they have the rental house next door that a drain is flooding the rental house that was improperly installed. It had incredible problems with traffic. And, and so they put a fence up and now there's questions about design standards. And so it's just been one headache after another where we've tried, they've tried very hard to work with city staff and thinking they're doing the right thing always be getting some roadblocks. And so they wanted a chance to be informed tonight of what was going on. And they're certainly looking now at signage and updating their buildings and they want to be in compliance and be part of the community. But, but I think the message that several of the business owners I've spoken to, as I've tried to get an understanding of what's going on, is they've been consistently told, you don't like it, you can leave. And that's not the message that I think any of the city leaders would really want to be shared to the business owners.
From your personal opinion of what you've just seen right now, would, had this been in place five years ago, would it have helped your client? Or would it have hindered them?
You know, here's what's hard. It's not the aspirational guidelines that help or hinder. It's the application. And it's the fair application. And, and the challenge always is, when I'm working with a small business owner and I come to deal with any municipality, it's really tough to have an arms-length conversation. Whereas if I'm coming on behalf of Home Depot or Walmart or something, I have a lot more horsepower to come and chat. So if there are standards that are fairly implemented, I think then we know what we, what we need to get to. But the problem has been is that there have been lots of promises over time that just did not materialize. And so I think it's just, it's in the implementation as much as anything. Yeah, you know, having aspirational ideas is, this is, you know, an attractive plan. It's just that in reality, practicality, we've got to make sure that the business owners are able to conduct their business. And so this is an example of right now where the Lemon Tree's having a really hard time serving its clients safely. You know, one of the comments is, we want slower pace of life and pedestrians to be able to cross the roads. Well, we were having pedestrians having a really hard, unsafe time to be able to cross that intersection. And, and so that's probably more information that you wanted, but that's kind of, I know some of my clients' thoughts.
Thank you.
Addressing her direct concern then of, from what I'm gathering, the process really is, is trying to have a fair execution of the whole process. Will this guideline actually have a process, procedural process in it that is easy to be followed? Or is it still, is it going to be an arbitrary type of a, of a, this thing?
So, if, if the, if the Planning Commission makes a recommendation to, to, you know, recommend council approve the design standards, a resolution would be brought to the City Council, probably looking, we're looking at May 22nd. And it's a resolution, not an ordinance. So ordinances are the process of codifying things into your code. New regulations into your code. It would be a resolution. The resolution would state something to the effect that the council wants, if they approve it, of course, would include the design standards. They'd reference it in the, in the update of the conference of plan we're working on. And then would also move to codify when we get to our development standards that we'll be working on as a result of the comp plan update. So in the downtown mixed-use code, there would be a statement that would say, states that, you know, something along the effects that like new development shall, shall adhere to the adopted downtown College Avenue design standards, something like that. That's not very refined. It'll, it'll come across much smoother than that, but that's, that's how we would implement it. And so when you look through these standards, there are some shalls in there, but there are also a lot of options, you know. And we had, we went, had great, you know, discussions about that when it came to the workshop in July of last year. So there are shalls and there are mays. There are probably more mays than there are shalls. So that's how we would, would implement it. You know, to speak specifically to the, to the Lemon Tree, you know, like Bob Styling, it's another, it's a good example of a building that, it, it kind of has that storefront look already in terms of, it doesn't, you know, have the pitched roof to it. It's, you know, it's, there are elements that if, if the owners wanted to, to, you know, make some upgrades, they could easily incorporate by, you know, you know, pulling elements from, from the plan. The, you know, this doesn't, this, this plan doesn't deal with how the street got developed. That was another process that we went through. Conference of Plan talked about wider sidewalks. Well, wider sidewalks meant that we ended up going through a road diet. So the road got a little bit narrower. It still, in most cases, allows for parking on both sides. But at certain key intersections, the council identified that they wanted turn pockets. And those turn pockets eliminated parking. And I don't doubt that there was some miscommunication possibly that went along through the process with the Giles. I myself was a proponent of not putting in those turn pockets, other than at Fourth and at Whitman. I don't see that many people turning onto Eighth Street. And I, but I'm a planner and I'm not a traffic engineer, so I tend to lean on more, more along the lines of, let's get, let's have that parking on there. It provides a buffer for the pedestrian activities that go along College Avenue. The Giles structure, their building is already set back quite a bit. So they actually have, they, when we poured our sidewalks, they poured new sidewalks behind ours on their property. And so there's, they actually have, you know, if there was a business there that had, you know, sidewalk activity, like a little cafe or something, you know, they could have outdoor seating there and they had a ton of room for it. Or, you know, if it was a retailer and they wanted to move out, you know, some dresses or whatever and put them out on a rack that was mobile. So, yeah, the ADA access, that's a problem and I don't think it was fully understood. I, I myself have never told anybody in this community that if they don't like it, they can go fly kites and go somewhere else. But, and I don't know anybody on the city staff that I work with on a daily basis would say anything like that to anybody as well.
I'd like to kind of, what you said is important and I don't want to belittle that. But what I, I guess what I'm really trying to come to is this standard that we're doing and its guidelines. The reality is, is you're going to eventually retire. And your engineer is eventually going to move on. Is there something written down that everybody follows and that the, that the owners can look at and say, okay, the guy before you is supposed to, was going through this way and, you know, and so that we don't have it all up in the air. There's something specifically written down, says, we're going to do this in this case and we're going to do this in this case. You as a business owner are going to do this in this case. And that's, I think, to me, is what these folks are trying to get to, is that maybe you said one thing, the engineer said something else, or maybe a third party said something else. And by then, it's all screwed up. And if we had a total guideline where everybody in the city goes one direction.
Well, I mean, yes, there will be, at some point, the adoption of this, if that happens, would be codified. Not the whole thing is, is not going to be codified, but a reference to it would be codified. So, so when I'm working with a builder or a property owner and they want to make improvements to their property or they're building something new, we can pull this out and they can work with their designer and they can read through it and they can see, oh, well, this says, you know, thou shall have a plinth. Thou shall have X, you know, number of square feet of glazing on the front of your building. Thou shall have, you know, and then there, here are the options. And so when I sit down as a reviewer or my, you know, whoever succeeds me, when I, I mean, look at this face. I'm not retiring anytime soon, but.
But you know, the business has been here for 50 years. It could be another 50 years. And you know, the next, I think this is, this to me sounds like what the real big issue is, is that there isn't an actually clear guideline all the way through. And I'm wondering if that's designed into this program.
Well, at these certainly, right now, yeah, there are no guidelines for how you, your building. I mean, other than meeting the building codes and setbacks. We have setback requirements. That's not anything new in terms of, you know, it's the requirement for the building to be, you know, sidewalk tight essentially has been on the books since 2010. And the parking in the back, I mean, the Lemon Tree property is already set up in terms of those, those guidelines that were adopted in 2010. It was built that way. It has parking in the back. However, that public parking in front of the building did go away. And, but you have to remember that it is public parking. And public parking, you know, that right of way, there is flexibility in terms of how the council would see to use that. If there isn't public need for a turn lane or widening for that matter, you know, sidewalks are often taken, you know, wide sidewalks are taken out and narrowed down so that turn lanes can be put in. I don't see that happening on College Avenue, but, and, and the council did, has looked into the idea of doing another traffic study to, to determine whether or not those, those pockets were warranted. And they had, they chose not to, to, to move on that. So.
We are.
That's another topic though.
We are a slow-growing little community. And as a private homeowner, I visualize along over the years, what I'm going to do to improve my place. And that's what we're trying to do, I feel, with College Place, is we're trying to look through the years and see what is going to happen with more people coming in, schools being built. All these things are happening. And I won't be here when a lot of this is implemented. But we've got to plan for roads and sidewalks and turn lanes and whatever. And I, I just feel like we want our businesses to be happy, but we want safety. We want them to see vision and feel like their business is going to grow. And, and we desire that. And, and we desire that. We desire businesses to come in. We're not desiring to stand still. We want, the more people that comes and walks to our streets, the more people that's going to go to the lemon tree. And I know I, I am getting up in years and I will pass, but we have young people that we want to come back here. And we want it to be attractive to them. So if we can express to the community, our desire is to bring business, build business, build the businesses that are here, encourage them. It's not, it's not to have businesses feel defeated.
So I have a couple of questions, just to kind of clarify for myself and maybe for some of the other folks. This is, these design guidelines really will be implemented as part of the comprehensive plan. And at some point, when that process finishes, then there will be really some design standards. I mean, then at that point, they're really implemented, I guess.
Right.
At that point, if I'm going to build a building, I'm going to have to comply with these design standards. It's not aspirational anymore, it's really, there are some hard, fast rules I need to comply with. However, if I'm an existing building owner, there's nothing that requires me to comply with these design standards. Is that correct?
There's, there's nothing that requires you to, to comply with them, you know, so long as you're, you're not doing anything to it. If you want to expand it, then we would look at, at seeing. And those, that, what we're talking about right now, we, we really probably, what we need to do is define that in when we codify. So what we should do in the, when we codify, when we're updating our development code is say, if a property owner is making improvements beyond a certain percentage of the assessed valuation, then they have to comply with the design standards. That's generally how you, you address who, who falls into these, this category and who doesn't. So this doesn't address that. I think the appropriate spot would, would be to put that, actually, that portion you would codify into the code. And we can work on that with, with our consultant, Greg Dorn, who's working us through the comp plan and the, and the development code update.
So if they remodeled, they would, it would fall under...
Well, you have to, you have to, you would have to, you would have to draw a line in the sand and say, you know, a certain percentage, say, I mean, you, you could make it if, you know, if you're 70% of the assessed valuation, then, or, you know, I don't know what the, what the appropriate ratio would be, but we'd have to come up with something.
There'll be some threshold that you can find. And then at that point, if you're going to do significant remodeling or addition or something, then you're going to have to...
So, and, and generally, you have a standard that says, you know, general maintenance and upkeep, you know, putting in new windows because you're old, the glazing's, you know, letting in air, they're not energy efficient. Or you're, you're replacing your siding because it's rotten. Or you're just repainting. I mean, those things, some of those things, repainting doesn't even require a permit. So, but, but if somebody called up and said, hey, you know, I'm repainting, I want to repaint my building, are there, do I need a permit? I could say, no, but you might consider, you're choosing a color palette, because the color palettes in the design standards are, are presented as an option and just kind of, that way I have an opportunity to direct them to that. Roofing, replacing your HVAC system, those sort of things don't, I mean, those are not going to, those are, would be exemptions from, you know, just general...
Do you really need permits?
Yeah, HVAC systems, roofing, re-roofing, yeah, those things need permits. Residing your building needs a permit. Putting in new windows need a permit.
John, are you looking for a recommendation from commission to council tonight?
Yes, I'm, I'm hoping that someone would make a motion. And there is a recommended action, if you look in action item number four, there's a recommended action for a motion.
So my understanding then is, is that these design standards and guidelines are only the first phase of this process. So we're still going to be talking more about this before you create a, a restrictive regulation, et cetera.
Well, these are the guidelines. So barring any minor tweaks to them, this is what you would, I'm hoping that you'll, you'll make a recommendation for approval to council. The, the portion, the actual implementation of it would be when we're working with Greg on the comp plan update process and the develop, the design, development standards, so our zoning code. And that's where we would work on the language that would say, you know, if you go beyond this line, you have to, you know, upgrade your facade or whatever. So this is similar to, the council just recently adopted the Blue Mountain Region Trail Plan for inclusion in the, the, as a reference document in the comprehensive plan. Now, that doesn't mean that, you know, every time we repave a road that we have to make sure that it, you know, we're going to turn it into a bike lane. There's, there's still an implementation process that that goes through, so... Or that we have to act on it. Just because we designated a bike route, that doesn't mean tomorrow we have to go out and put up, you know, bike signs for bike routes.
Any further thoughts, comments, discussion?
Maybe one more question, just for clarification. I, I remember when we first started talking about this, we were at one spot and we evolved a little bit based on public feedback. Perhaps evolved a bit towards more flexibility in terms of expectations for existing building owners. I'm, I'm wondering if, if there's anything that either of you could share in terms of best practice in other communities? Our, our needs are, are, are unique, and so we certainly want to customize our, our plan for our community's needs. But I imagine there's other communities of similar nature. How did they balance this trade-off between striving for a particular appearance, but also balancing that with, with the needs of existing landowners and businesses to evolve in a method that's slow enough that it's sustainable? What's, what's the right balance point there? Do we have any case studies, any examples that we could point to?
Well, I think we, there are a number of examples. I mean, the first thing that pops to mind in Washington State is Leavenworth. I mean, they have design standards that are, you know, some people might consider they're kind of wacky, but they, they have also transformed that community into a destination place. And there's probably not a business owner in that community right now that would say, I hate these design standards because it has turned it into this Bavarian Mecca that people go to. And, I mean, it's like the Disneyland, Bavaria of Disneyland, you know, it's... So that's one extreme. And, and the other, you know, I think is what we have, where, where we've, we've drawn and painted some pretty pictures, we've provided some good examples, we've, great sketches and defined elements that, you know, the way architects think to kind of achieve that and kind of created an all-of-a-like, like, here's what you really need, you know, these, these are the structural things you need to achieve this, and then here's the icing on the cake that you, you know, you choose what color frosting you want and the piping and that kind of stuff. And, go ahead, Bob, and step in. I mean, you've worked with a lot of communities, so...
One of the steps in our process was to meet with, I forget the man's name, the architect...
Oh, yeah, Jim Stentkamp. That's, that's one thing I didn't mention, but in December, you know, we, we actually, I thought, you know, let's take the draft that we have and see what an architect thinks about it and, and let him pick it, pick it apart. So the three of us met.
Yeah, so we had about a two-hour meeting, we went through point by point, and he looked at it from the viewpoint of someone trying to design within these guidelines. And he, we modified things so that someone using them from a design aspect would be able to have the flexibility they needed and yet meet the intent that we felt that the community wanted. From us, on a continuum, I think you are at the first step in this, you have, at one end of the scale, say Scottsdale, Arizona, and for the last 45, 50 years, they have had a design review board. And so before you can even prepare plans for a construction permit, you have, these days, almost an 18-month process, very highly delineated as to, you set a meeting with staff, and that's six weeks out because they're booked so heavily. And then you have the preliminary meeting with staff to talk about, to talk about what you want to design. And then they'll tell you whether they think they would support it or not. A lot happens at staff level. And, and then it moves through this very clearly delineated system and you'll present drawings at a certain point to a design review board made up of citizens. And they will, you know, and it must indicate all this data about how they're meeting the zoning ordinance and open space and number of plants and, and, and very restrictive as to the use of materials and density. And then you might get approved. And you usually get approved because you've been going through staff levels of approval. And it comes to the design review board with a staff recommendation of approval or denial. And, and so I've watched that process grow over the last, I came in at about year 40, but it, it has become more and more restrictive. You, on the other hand, are, you're taking what's already written in the comprehensive plan, in the zoning ordinance for parking, setbacks, et cetera, and then trying to give a little more clarity to developers as to how to create the, the feel that was asked for in the comprehensive plan. The, the small-town atmosphere setting for a slow pace of life. And out of the comprehensive plan, create standards to ensure that buildings and storefronts are the dominant features, not parking and signs. And so, and then allow for flexibility and innovation. And these are right out of your comprehensive plan. So all this is trying to do is give people who want to come here further guidance and clarity. And we did, we took a very open approach to this, and as John said, very few shalls and many mazes or shoulds to help people consider things, but allowing for a lot of creativity to happen in creating this, this sense of place. So I, I think you're a, a good beginning point to help, you know, set some standards for a downtown that in 20, 30 years will really be having a nice feel to it. And yet allow for a lot of creativity. That's the, the key and that we felt was being allowed for in this. And there's a few things that are necessary, such as, you know, buildings closer to the street, but beyond that, you know, there's not a whole lot of you must-dos. And so, and it allows for flexibility between the designer and staff. And so there's very few, few things that staff could come in and say, you can't do that because it's a may. And so it's, I think they're very, they're a good entry-level step into creating this sense of place that college plans, comprehensive plan, and zoning ordinance have asked for.
And we're not saying that people have to change their building that's existing now.
Right.
I mean, it's there.
That's correct.
I would recommend that we, or move that we recommend to the council, the standard and guidelines, in that sense a portion of this comprehensive plan in consideration.
Motion by Commissioner Duncan.
I second it.
Any other further comment, discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Say sorry. Okay, carry seven zero. All right. No reports, no the business?
No, I guess I'd just like to make it clear, thank you, and, but also, so we'll have a report to, to council on May 8th about your recommendation. It'll just be a report, they won't make, take any action that night. And then at May 22nd, that would, will be the night that they would be asked to take action on this recommendation, so... Now, regarding the comp plan process, I guess a brief update on that. We are in the process of writing a draft, and the comp plan, UGA applications with the county are moving forward. We got a preliminary peek at, when they were going to have a workshop, but then they moved the dates on, so I don't have any information on, on that. But we're, we're likely going to have to apply for an extension just because we're getting close to the, the June 30th deadline and, so... And I'm, I'm going to go to Florida in June, too, so...
Or in the summer, I don't know, John.
It's, yeah, my wife, yeah, yeah.